Welcome to the July 27, 2021 regular meeting of the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. We're in a closed session. Madam Clerk?
Closed session for today, July 27, 2021. Item 1 pursuant to Government Code 549 and 57.6, conference with county designator labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union (SEIU), Local 1021, Deputy Sheriff's Association (DSA). Item 2 pursuant to Government Code 54957A, threat to public services or facilities consultation with Under Sheriff Jim Macedo, Calaveras County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll adjourn into closed session. Welcome back to the July 27, 2021 regular meeting of the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Toffenelli, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the pledge to our flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the closed session will be continued. At the end of the day, there is nothing to report out. Staff announcements, this is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Good morning. This is Corey Allen, your Director of Health and Human Services Agency. Chairman members of the board, I do have a brief announcement. We have a new state public health officer order that will be coming into effect at midnight on August 9. That new order is directly impacting those working in congregate care and health facilities. As a brief synopsis, I want to advise that anyone working in such fields will now be required, if they remain unvaccinated, to test at least weekly. In the more high-risk and acute healthcare settings, the requirement will be at least twice weekly. And that's for anyone that is not fully vaccinated. This also includes anyone who is unable to be vaccinated due to medical reasons. The testing requirement will still remain due to the ability that they have in continuing to pass along this virus. There will also be enhanced masking requirements in those fields. So for anyone that's in the high-risk congregate care or acute risk settings, the respirator level masking will be required. All other healthcare settings, including behavioral helps and jails, will be required to wear a surgical grade or N95 mask, and that will increase to the respirator style mask in any event of a COVID outbreak in that setting. So there will be more to follow on how we will roll this out for county, but I wanted to make sure the community and your board was advised.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Ms. Callaway has a question?
Ms. Allen, Dr. Ramirez did a yeoman's job yesterday at the community meeting. I just wanted you to know.
Thank you so much.
It wasn't a topic that people necessarily wanted to hear, but he was very empathetic with people's positions, but didn't stray from the message. So I greatly appreciate it. Please extend my thanks to him.
Absolutely.
And the other question I have started getting, which I'm assuming you'll keep us informed, is what is it that you're hearing on implementing required masks in public places, i.e. stores and so forth, businesses?
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything formal from CDPH on that specifically. I think right now the focus has really been on the health settings. But I think what's happening is entities and businesses are making decisions on their own that really they've had the ability to make all along in order to help curtail the virus expanding beyond where it is right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further staff comments?
I do not see any at this time.
Thank you. General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Do we have public comment?
I do not see any at this time.
Thank you. Give it a few more seconds just for the delay. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Would any board members like to remove any items? Mr. Toffenelli?
I don't want to remove them, but I will be recording a no vote on Items 4, 5, and 6.
Any other board members? Staff members?
There is no public comment or public request this time.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion on it in its entirety with the note that Mr. Toffenelli is recording a no vote for 4, 5, and 6.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. We have a motion by Ms. Callaway?
Second.
A second by Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board with the exceptions of 4, 5, and 6 with a single no by Mr. Toffenelli in each one of those. Regular agenda. Item 10, agreement information technology. Approve the attached quote from E+ Technology for purchase of Palo Alto Network PA 5250 with five years of maintenance and threat prevention subscription for $495,920 plus applicable tax and shipping. Approve five-year installment payment plan from E+ Technology for purchase of the equipment as quoted. Authorize the county administrative officer or designated to execute agreement. Ms. Stan?
Good morning, Board. Stan Moore, Chief Information Officer for the county. So I'm bringing this forward for consideration by the board. This solution is part of our layered cyber defense environment, and the equipment and the software is included in the current approved budget. The final dollar amount came in slightly under where we were at budget time. The solution is part of a competitively bid solution with the pricing set by NASPO. It is sourced from Palo Alto Network, and then we do the purchasing through E+. It will include an initial purchase that we will be making of $238,000, and then there's an additional four years of payments that go out for $64,000. The payment is going to be made through a five-year installment that is done through E+ Finance. There is no additional up charge incurred by the county. The vendor is picking that up and still providing less than the competitive bid NASPO pricing. So this is an important item for us to purchase for our cyber defense program. There will be more investments that will come over time, but this is a significant one that will assist in monitoring traffic and being able to protect against insider threats. Are there questions that the board has that I would be able to address at this time?
Ms. Callaway?
I understand all the money portion, but I don't understand what it is that it's going to do.
Sure. So this is something that is referred to as a next-generation firewall. Firewalls protect our traffic, looking for malicious threats that we may have. These firewalls have gotten more sophisticated over time. This particular firewall gives us a lot more ability to control what traffic is allowed, trapping traffic that we do not want to have within our environment. The board approved a solution for us last year that was referred to as a north-south firewall. That protects us from, or does additional protection of traffic coming in from the Internet. This is protecting us from internal threats. So this is monitoring all of our network traffic that flows laterally within the county. Once it has come in from the Internet and then is going from department to department, for example. It monitors that traffic. We have a subscription from the vendor that helps us to monitor and look for things that would be problematic and would allow us to trap for and respond to traffic that could cause problems. We are all reading about county and local and state agencies that are being hit with malware these days, and so we have multiple components that help to protect us. This is very key as one of those components in a layered cyber defense protection. At some point later on in the year, IT would like to come back and do a more in-depth discussion with the board on our security, on our cyber defenses, where we are now and where we have yet to go. This is a key component within that threat protection.
Ms. Moore, does this apply to, like, the county iPad I'm using, or whether it's here or at home?
Great question. This is specific to within the county network. So if that iPad that you are using was connected to the county network and you're conducting county business on the county network, then yes, it absolutely would. If it is your iPad connected to the Internet and you are not on the county network, then it does not come into play for that. This is when you would be connected to the county network.
So my Wi-Fi shows CC stat. Am I on the county network or not?
You are on a guest network now, so that is not the same. That is, for that CCG, that is, without getting too terribly deep into it, that is, you are, depending on what you're doing, you are likely not connected directly to the network. I can go into more detail with you later.
No, that's fine. I mean, I'm looking at the county's, the agenda for today on CC stat.
Yes.
I just wasn't clear. So if I do an email to the CAO or to you?
Yes, if you are using email, you will be on the county network, and if you would have something malicious in the email, we have multiple ways that we are going to
Delete me?
Trap that.
Okay.
Right. And this would come into play in that food chain.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Ms. Fuldorff? Any other board questions? With that, we'll go to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time?
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'll approve the quote from E+ Technology, the five-year installment plan, and authorize the CAO or designated to execute the contract. Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely, Ms. Callaway. As long as you make this a motion.
Is there, it is a motion, but is there a part of this that if we need to make minor changes that Mr. Moore can do that? That seems to be SOP for a lot of our contracts.
We could certainly, I believe, entertain a motion with that modification. That would be great.
As modified, I make that motion. Thank you.
We have a second. By Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Item 11, resolution, human resources. Adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list, adopting new job descriptions effective July 31, consistent with the fiscal year 2021-22 recommended budget. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Fuldorff, and you all have a good time.
Okay. Item number 11. Supervisor Stoppa already read out the agenda item, so I'm going to pass it to Krista Judy.
Good morning. Vice Chair Fuldorff, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, human resources, Director of Human Resources Risk Management. And today I am bringing before you a resolution to adopt changes to the position control list. We are asking to reclassify the Assessment Tech 3 and 4 and the Cadastral GIS Technician 123 to Assessment Analyst 12 positions. And then we are also asking for the classification of Appraiser Trainee and the salary adjustment on the Assessment Tech 2. And the county has met and conferred with SEIU, and we have come to agreements on the reclassification of these positions and the job descriptions. And I'm ready to answer any questions.
Are there any board questions? Doesn't seem like there's any board questions. Okay. Is there any other staff comment, questions on this? Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay. Does there is a public comment online?
We have Andrea Pinkham? Andrea?
Yes. Hi, good morning. I'd like to thank you guys for hanging tight while we worked this out. We were in constant comments, I mean, constant contact with the workers, and I have to give the workers a lot of credit. They were very thorough in discussing these changes. We didn't do anything different, I didn't do anything different than I would have done with any other department when going through a reclassification process. And we do support these changes moving forward with the Assessment Tech and the Assessment Analyst. That being said, it shouldn't have been this difficult to get these changes or to approve these changes. Through this process, you guys may or may not know, we've had file unfair labor practice charges for after audience meetings being held, for contracting out without meeting and conferring. Things like this shouldn't have to happen to meet with workers and get these kinds of changes approved. We're trying to be good labor partners. The workers, like I said, have been wonderful partners in this process, but somewhere things are failing. And we're glad we were able to, like Judy said, meet and confer and get this done, but it shouldn't be this difficult to get these kinds of things completed. Hopefully we can learn from this and move forward in a positive fashion, because I'm sure this isn't the last kind of change we're going to see in the future, but we're glad that this one at least ended on a positive note for the workers in this department. Thank
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Let me finish. Is anyone else online?
Not at this time, no.
Supervisor Callaway?
Ms. Pinkman, are you still online? No.
Yes, I am.
Oh, you were kind of breaking up. Well, or I was. You said you were filing something? That wasn't clear?
Yes, we were filing unfair labor practice charges against Calaveras County for several things, some of which include contracting out and department without meeting and conferring. Some of which involve meetings that were held during the meeting and confer process without the union present. So I can provide you a detailed copy of those charges without something you'd like to see.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other board member comment?
Yeah, I was unaware that there was a grievance filed as well, so I would like to see that as well.
Any other board member comments or question? And then Stacy, is there any other public comment since there was a delay?
No, no further public comments.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve item number 11?
I move this item, Madam Vice Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Callaway. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passage favor of 401.
And Mr. Guaramendi has asked for something sidebar. If Ms. Hawkins could maybe discuss that as appropriate in closed session, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
We will wait a few minutes and allow Supervisor Stoppa to come back in the room.
See everyone's here still? What time do we have? Okay. Just want to make sure. So we'll move on to item 12, resolution, human resources. Adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list, changing the title of Deputy CAO Solid Waste and Water Policy to Director of Solid Waste and Water Policy. Updating job descriptions and approving a new position control number for the IWM manager effective July 31, 2021.
Good afternoon.
Judy Hawkins. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to take this one?
No, please go ahead. Be my guest.
Okay. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. What I'm bringing before you today is a change to our position control list. We are asking to update the title for the position of Director of Solid Waste and Water Policy. This job description, we only made a change to the title and then some updates to just some grammar within the job description. We did not change the duties of this position. And then we are asking, because this position currently does reside on our position control list, but it is being underfilled by the Integrated Waste Manager, and so we are asking for a position for the Integrated Waste Manager so we can fill the position of Director of Solid Waste and Water Policy. Any questions?
Any board members have any questions? Mr. Guaramendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CAO Lauda and I did discuss this. I have concerns about the water policy being part of this, but I think it's, we'll give it a shot and see if we can find someone who can do, it's a lot to do IWM and be the water person. It's pretty hard to find someone who has both those skills, but I trust our CAO and let her figure it out. So I'll support this.
Thank you, Mr. Guaramendi. Any further board questions or comments? With that, public
There is no public comment at this time.
We'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion or further comments?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Guaramendi. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, informational item, administrative office. Provide direction to staff regarding August 2021 through December 2021 study sessions. Ms. Fuldorff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am going to share my screen. Okay, great. So as you know, we met back in January, again in February, and your board gave direction for study sessions. and your board gave direction for study sessions that would take place during the first six months of the year. Since that time, we have indeed discussed strategic planning, formed the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee, as well as the Ad hoc Committee. In April, we heard the assessment role discussion and the classification comp study, department consolidation discussion. IWM presented in May. We had the clerk reporter give the redistricting public hearing and got that kicked off in June. And earlier this month, we received a building department update, and then this study session was actually moved from that day to today based on the schedule in place for that session. So, based on conversations that we've had with some of you, with the various committees and our colleagues, department heads, et cetera, there are some recommendations, oh, I apologize. Get that back up on my screen. There are some recommendations that I would like to make to the board as well as entertain discussion from you to determine what these study sessions might look like for the remainder of this calendar year, as well as January of 2022. And the reason why I'm recommending that we have that conversation now is because typically whenever one returns after the holidays in early January, that first study session is basically to discuss about the study sessions that will come forward in that year. But we've got a lot of balls in motion, as I think you're all aware, between our various committees, the strategic plan, et cetera. And I think it would be wise to, in addition to having a study session on study sessions in that first meeting in January, also potentially agendize an additional study session or two so that we can really keep the ball rolling and continue to, to move forward with the momentum we've gained so far this calendar year. So with that, I recommend we are, as a result of COVID and changing state and Calooshia guidance regarding reopening, we know that we also have PS, Public Safety Power Shut-Offs that occasionally may disrupt our operations, as well as strong feelings from, I think on some level, the board, certainly with department heads and our county staff regarding where we think the telework policy should be. We know from a legal perspective that we should have a policy in place even if COVID, for example, were to basically cease to become, cease to be disruptive to our operations. In conversations with our Human Resources Department, who has been working on a telework policy and to bring to you, I recommend having a study session in August so that, and at which point we would have had department head feedback to bring to you and have the discussion about where you would like us to go from a policy level in terms of that telework policy. I'll go ahead and just mention all of these, and then if you would like to discuss and add or take away, the next recommendation for August, this one I'm particularly excited to make. As you know, the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee, Standing Brown Act Committee was formed last spring. We have been regularly meeting and moving forward. We recommend at this time that in August, further to, to incredibly productive conversations that I was fortunate to have with Pat, Mr. Pat Blacklock, President and CEO of RCRC, and former CAO from Yuba, Robert Bundorf, on Friday. We would like to, I recommend, that we invite them to speak with us in August regarding moving forward with our strategic plan. We have outlined, I think, some exciting recommended next steps for your board to hear, and with your direction, I will move forward with that. We have also, from the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee, have had a recommendation to bring back policies. We have many that are in the works. We can give updates on the personal policies and procedures that are currently being worked on with our consultant. We can bring back recommendations for reserve policies, debt reserve, sorry. The policy for the Debt Advisory Committee, which I'll remind the board, is crucial to our being able to meet and move forward when we do get to the point with our strategic planning and capital improvement projects and as we move forward into the budget cycle and start to really try and integrate the work that's done with the strategic plan into our everyday operations, that the, a study session in November would be timely for that and give staff the opportunity to take the board's policy level direction back, incorporate it into those policies, finalize them, and then have them truly in place as we enter next year's recommended budget. So further CIP recommendations for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Many, many, many counties, and wisely so, incorporate into their budget discussion, often separately, CIP recommendations that tie back to their strategic planning and that tie in to their budget process. So with the understanding that the Strategic Planning Committee is still in its infancy and we don't yet have a strategic plan, but knowing that recommended budget will be coming nonetheless, this would be an opportunity for the Strategic Planning Committee in connection with staff to bring an item that I fully expect the following year would be much more robust, but at least bring that discussion to the board in January of next year. Likewise, workforce housing and planning with, with the Planning Department and Health and Human Services. We have been working together. There are developments on the horizon with respect to workforce housing. In terms of the timing that makes sense, their strong recommendation is that that item be brought in January, and for that reason, that is my recommendation to you. And then, of course, our study session on study sessions for January 2022. With that, I am looking forward to hearing your board's discussion as well as recommendations for additional study sessions. And I'll note that, for example, there is no recommendation for September, October, or December. So there's, even if you were to accept these recommendations as presented, there are still three additional opportunities for study sessions over the next, over the remainder of this calendar year.
Any board member recommendations, comments, questions? I'll bring up IWM for one of those. I know it's in transition right now with one of the items we just approved, but we had originally said to bring that back in August. I understand putting it back farther, but possibly in November or October, you know. Any other board suggestions, comments? Mr. Guaramendi, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I've, I've got two, but they don't need to be their own separate. Like, if it worked out for staff, I don't mind if they're put into regular meetings. But at the, during budget, I was informed that I was putting forward ideas that perhaps I didn't understand completely enough. So I'd like to hear PATV present on what they do so I can better understand it in a budget context and who they are and sort of what the budget is and how that whole thing is funded and works. So I am listening, Susan. The, the other one I'd like to talk about is EMA, Environmental Management Agency. We talk a lot about the animal shelter, but I know they've got a lot of other things on their portfolio, and specifically, I'd like to hear how they're working to make sure cottage industries are able to, are being permitted. And it was, it was a priority a number of years ago, but I'm not sure where those things are. So I'd like to learn more about EMA and how they're working with businesses in particular.
Thank you, Mr. Guaramendi. Any further comments you suggest? Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Mr. Guaramendi. Any further board comments or questions? Ms. Follendorf?
I think we should do another field trip day after a study session, maybe. We talked about doing it maybe quarterly and.
Yeah, every, every two months. Yeah.
Explore someone else.
To Milton. To Milton.
Probably should.
Maybe to some of the transfer stations. You're welcome to the one in Avery. We'll host it.
I think, I think. Don't drink the water?
The wine. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Might be a good place to go, especially since Supervisor Guaramendi would like a discussion. Or you did.
He wanted it.
Mr. Stocker did.
Mr. Ben?
Mr. Ben.
You know, that might go hand in hand with the same time we do, do IWM and get, get a, real feel for it down there, real, real smell for it. Thank you, Ms. Follendorf.
Yep.
Ms. Callaway, do you have anything further to?
The only thing I'm going to say, which is in the study session, I do not like calling it a special session. It is not a special session. It is a board meeting. I mean, the last one we had, we had consent agenda items. We had a regular item. I know, I read the law. I read it. It is not, though, a special session. It's a board meeting.
So I think Supervisor Callaway.
I'm going to call, I'm going to call Mr. Moore and say, you know, you better get that. I was thinking about that.
I think what we could do is we would just, we would need a change in our ordinance because our ordinance specifies that the second and fourth Tuesdays are the regular board meetings, meaning that any other board meeting is unfortunately by default a special meeting. We could change our ordinance to say that the second and fourth Tuesdays and any other meeting scheduled on the board's, you know, adopted calendar for the year is a regular meeting. And then we could call them all regular meetings if that's something the board would like to do.
I'd like to do that.
I've, I've been hearing about this from Ms. Callaway for over a year now. And, and, you know, to lay it to rest, I would support her in making that change.
There's nothing special about that meeting.
I would be happy to bring back an amended ordinance for the board to consider.
Are all board members okay with that? Thank, thank you for the proposal, Ms. Callaway. You got more work on your plate there, Ms. Edwards.
Not a problem.
Okay, we'll bring it to public comment with that.
There is no public comment at this time?
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you very much. Is there?
No, I can't get on. I think Stan Moore, I think IT is using me as an example of why he needed to hire that company.
Maybe next time, don't ask so many questions.
Yeah, you have to re-compute if you can't get on.
Can't get on. So.
Okay.
So I'm going to share with Supervisor.
Ms. Ms. Callaway, is there something else you would like to bring up for the study session? Items? Not at this time?
No. Yeah.
Have Stan Moore come in and we do a study session with IT and T?
IT.
IT.
IT and T?
IT and T. IT, excuse me.
Okay. Is there, do you have enough clear direction there, Ms. Lauda?
So, I'm, sorry, just trying to correct my spelling errors. There we go.
You know, there's one other thing I would like to bring up. And it's kind of up there, I mean, until we get a permanent planning director. But, you know, moving forward, maybe bringing back at a certain time, where we're at with implementation of the general plan and all those policies and everything else that come hand in hand with it, there's, there's a lot more work to be done. You know? So I think that's something, at a certain time, I don't want to set a date, but I think that's something important for us to continue to discuss and prioritize as a board.
So, and I would recommend, when that happens, perhaps in Q1 of 2022, also then the discussion of our community stakeholders, county parks, and as we previously discussed, how that development is also tied in with our strategic plan.
January meetings looking awfully rough.
Maybe February.
No, I, I mean, and we do have a couple of open slots.
Yeah.
Here. I mean, there's nothing saying that we can't move some of that around, you know, to an earlier date. But at this time, that works for me.
So right now, we've got August covered. If it's the board's direction, environmental management, I'm concerned that September might be premature, so we'd want to speak with Ms. Medina and see if that timing is reasonable. If not, you know, December, or we could perhaps include it in either the November or the October sessions. And then we've got IWM update for October and policies for November. And again, with the, the opportunity either in September or summer to add an additional session.
Any board comments to that? Are you going to let her break your iPad, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I, I think this is somewhat of, some of the things are nailed down. I mean, we're going to have to also, one of these, one of these is going to be coming forward at the same time with redistricting. There may be more meetings coming up with that that we may need to fit in. So I think leaving a little leeway on, and so we can be fluid on how we do everything may be the best course going forward.
You make a, a great point. So perhaps then that means environmental management would be best positioned for December, and that would leave us with September to have flexibility for the different town halls and any discussions and updates that might come as we move through the redistricting process. Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'll leave it to you.
Okay.
But as long as we hear something about PATV and, and EMA at some point.
Yeah. And PATV, if we can get that on a study session day, great, but I think we can get them to come and speak with us.
Whatever works for you.
Yeah.
If there's anything further, are you comfortable with that, Ms. Lauda?
I am.
I don't think we need a vote on this one, do we, Ms. Edwards?
No.
Purely informational. All right, with that, we'll take a 10-minute break. It's 10 o'clock. Welcome back. Can we turn off your volume? Thank you. Item 13, I'm, I'm, I apologize, 14. Resolution, Division of Canvas Control. Adopt a resolution establishing an application. Resolution, Division of Cannabis Control, adopt a resolution establishing an application fee for cannabis permit modifications. Mr. Whalen?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chair. We're pleased to report this morning and bring before you a resolution that will fill out another component of our program. As the board is aware.
You just, we gotta have the red light on.
There you go.
There you go. Okay.
As the board is aware, we are a fee-funded department. So that means that all of our activities and reviewing applications and continuing operations are all funded by the applicants themselves. One of those fees would be established for modifications under Chapter 1795-110. And that would permit applicants to make minor modifications to their premises, to alter, expand them, or make slight adjustments to their premises plan to include perhaps additional buildings. It could be virtually anything. It's a versatile fee that's intended to accommodate a large array of different changes that could possibly be made. We conducted an in-depth review of our activities in establishing this fee. We talked with cooperating departments. And I prepared a PowerPoint presentation, um, that would broadly go over this as well as the fee study itself that I'll go over as well today. So without further ado, I'd like to get started on the presentation. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, we're a fee-funded department. And this would be a fee that would be established to be able, to enable us to be able to process potential changes to premises. So when we started reviewing this process and deciding how to structure the review itself and how to establish this fee, we decided that the best way to structure this would be based on the system that we have in place for main applications. So what we currently do is we have a screening review that allows us to check basic eligibility under Chapter 1795 before an applicant is advanced to the main application phase, where cooperating departments, including Building, Planning, and Public Works, the Environmental Management Agency, come into the review for their subject matter-specific reviews and they approve or disapprove the application. So as you can see from this diagram, the application itself would be filed with the Division of Cannabis Control in the first place. Uh, and step one is for us to have our screening review. It's a preliminary review, after which if the applicant meets basic eligibility criteria, the application is set up for review by our cooperating agencies that you see down on the bottom after step two. The application is then sent to these cooperating departments who conduct their review and decide whether, for instance, in the case of building, the potential change would require an additional building permit fee or optionally, an additional inspection. So for instance, if someone were to increase or decrease their canopy size in the case of cultivation, building would have the opportunity to come out and inspect the size and location of the canopy itself and make an assessment of whether it requires an additional permit or whether no additional review would be required. Public Works similarly would review and analyze these applications to decide if there's a possible adjustment to RIN fees that needs to be made, or if there's any grading that needs to be inspected and potentially permitted. So this review is essentially structured based on our main application review that we currently employ. This not only gives us the benefit of looping in all of the cooperating departments, but it also allows us to utilize our experience with the program thus far with a system that has worked well for us so that we can loop in all of these departments and they approve each and every modification. So just to illustrate what modifications may look like, we're expecting to receive, for instance, canopy reductions or increases if someone hadn't yet built out their full canopy potential, uh, under our 1795. So also amendments that may include a change to an existing building, maybe the premises that they diagrammed with us in the first place, but not, had not yet built out. Maybe the as-built or the, the subsequent designs come back slightly different. The building is 10 feet longer or shorter, maybe it's sized differently. These are all modifications that both the state and we are interested in looking at. And so what would happen in this type of situation, if it were a, an addition or change to a, a building that was diagrammed, we would conduct our preliminary review. It would go out to our cooperating departments and they would decide whether this impacts their subject matter or not. If it were a building, um, the Chief Building Officials Department would probably look at this and decide, is this substantial? Or is this significant enough that it may require a change to a, a building permit? Or perhaps they need to come out and inspect it for safety purposes. And in the case of the canopy that you see on the right-hand portion of this diagram, they've diagrammed out rows of canopy. Maybe they've decided throughout the course of the year, based on their experience over the last year and a half, that this is, uh, perhaps they want to reduce this canopy. Then removing one of these rows, for example, uh, could be a potential modification. It's essentially any modification that does not require them to change the parcel or parcels that, uh, they've applied with us for in the first place, uh, in which case it would require a completely new permit review process. But, um, we felt that this diagram, um, shows a lot of the different types of features that we're looking at that could possibly be changed on a premises. And those are some of the examples that we expect to be more common types of, of modifications to premises. So this diagram shows, uh, what the process may look like with the building department. For example, I was describing a little earlier that, um, in the first place, we would refer an application over to the building department. You can see at the very top of the diagram, the arrow going over to the building department for their administrative review. In consultation with them, we've set up a time of an hour for them to be able to review and analyze an application and to make decisions about what additional, uh, reviews or permits may be required in that application. If it's a change that doesn't substantially change the premises, for example, maybe a building wants to re-diagram existing infrastructure in that building, so existing spaces, and allocate those spaces to a different license type, for example, the limited distributor. Maybe there's a portion of the building that they don't necessarily have to change, or they're just adding safety boxes in that building so that they can securely store the cannabis. These are example of changes that wouldn't necessarily, uh, require, uh, a significant amount of follow-up review from the building department. And in such cases, they could refer the, the, uh, application back over to us with approval. If however, they see the application and they decide that additional inspections are required, there's an optional compliance inspection on the right-hand portion of this diagram. So the owner would schedule the inspection with the building department. And building personnel would go out to the premises and decide if the inspection process can be approved at that point or if it needs to be routed back over to, um, the permitting process. And that's the middle portion of the diagram where they go back up to the permit required, um, box because they've decided that this particular change is something that would require a permit. And once these processes are complete, the inspection process or the permitting process, they would then approve it and refer it back over to the Division of Cannabis Control. The planning department will conduct a review to ensure that setbacks and sensitive use zones are still being complied with. If there were a change in the location of a building, however modest, that's something that they would look at to decide, are we still meeting the requirements of Chapter 1795? And so they have an administrative fee built into this so that they can review those site diagrams. And if they approve, green check it and give us the ability to move forward with the application based on their review. The Environmental Management Agency also will play a role, um, significantly if there's changes to, uh, the canopy or the premises in such a way that the EMA will need to make decisions about water usage, confirming calculations about carbon offsets that could be impacted by canopy changes. They would also make, uh, Coupa determinations regarding hazardous materials in the review. And so they would play an active role in this as well to make sure that all of the environmental regulations that they oversee are still being complied with if there were any change. The Public Works Department, um, will also review modifications. One of the main pieces of this will be if, if there's a change to canopy that increases it, for example, yeah, the Public Works Department may need to assess RIN fees or decide how many workers are going to be out at the site and determine whether that needs to be increased or decreased based upon the changes. They will also make the same determinations they currently make in our main application review regarding grading and, uh, similar, uh, encroachment reviews that they currently process. So they too have an administrative fee built into this so that they can see an application and decide, does this impact any of the issues that we as the Public Works Department need to analyze and make decisions based on? And this is an example of what that may look like. So for example, the Division of Cannabis Control is in the middle, um, just like with the building department. If we've screened the application and it's approved in the first place preliminarily, we will refer it out to Public Works as well so they can make an administrative review of the file and decide if there's any additional changes that, or additional reviews that they need to conduct. In this case, this is a diagram of, of what their grading permit process would look like. And you can see it goes down to as-built versus new grading and follows the process. If there is an addition to a premises that involves new access, a new road, maybe there's a new building and a, um, grading that needs to be conducted in conjunction with that, that exceeds the thresholds for, um, what the building department would be able to process under a normal building permit, they would become engaged and impose a grading permit requirement on the applicant. So they too have had an administrative fee built into this, uh, fee study. And this is the process that will allow them to also review the application and decide if there's any additional follow-up work that needs to be conducted. So generally speaking, uh, the fee that we have arrived at is $783. This is a basic fee that would allow for administrative reviews by our cooperating departments, but it's also a versatile fee. Because modifications can encompass a wide variety of changes to the premises from very small to relatively significant, we felt that it was, uh, ideal to adopt a fee that could also adjust. So based upon building's review, for instance, if there were changes that required additional inspections by the building department, the building department has an independent fee study that they recently adopted. And it allows them to apply an hourly rate for reviews should they need to go out to the property to conduct additional inspections. So I think that this is a, um, a benefit to our program because it's versatile. And when I look at modification fees across the state at other counties that have, uh, adopted modification fees, I see, for example, Sacramento is somewhere around a thousand dollars, other counties, uh, multiple thousands. But it's across the board because it's a hard fee to be able to adapt to something that needs to be versatile because there's not really a one-size-fits-all for modifications. Another county, Humboldt, for instance, they apply a, uh, exact cost. So they require a deposit upfront of approximately seven or eight hundred dollars. And then they conduct the modification reviews and essentially tack on a fee to that from that point. So, um, I think that this strikes a very good balance between the different approaches from different counties because it gives us the ability to have a basic fee that engages all of our cooperating departments, but then allows it to adapt should that change need additional reviews from building, for example. So I've also got the fee study here that I would like to walk through briefly. So in the fee study, um, we've outlined the basic procedure that I just described through the PowerPoint presentation that this is a full county effort from all of our cooperating departments to make sure that the changes are completely compliant with our code and safe. And what I'd like to do is, uh, get down to the costing charts. So in arriving at this fee, um, what we utilized was each, uh, through our discussions, both internally at the Division of Cannabis Control and with these cooperating departments, we've actually sat down with the people who do this work, um, who are actually engaged on the files and studied each step that would be required in order to process a modification. We've taken the estimated amount of time that would take based on those meetings and utilized the fully weighted salaries for each of these exact employees to estimate the cost. And in the case of the DCC, um, we have a time of approximately one hour for the director, four for the department analyst, one and a half for the administrative assistant, multiplied by their fully weighted hourly rates, we've arrived at the component for the DCC of $328.97. And as discussed earlier, um, for the building department, we've built in an administrative review fee of 139, which would cover the building department for one hour of administrative review, from which point they can decide whether this is a modification that is significant enough or implicates any of the, uh, issues within their purview that would require an additional inspection or a permit. But the $139 is the fee that would give them that administrative review timeframe so they can look at this file and assess it and decide if this is something that they need to do follow-up work on. For the planning department, um, we've also used the fully weighted rates. And this was the result of a meeting with the planning department on what we perceive will be their role in the modification review, essentially reviewing setback requirements and ensuring that sensitive use, sensitive use buffer zones are still being met for a change that may result in a slight relocation or expansion of the premises. So they would be able to conduct that review. And we've allocated a half hour for the director position and one hour for the planner two. I think that the ability to involve the director and planner two in this is helpful, especially if there are zoning that has special issues, um, such as if there were a split zone or, um, some other, some other, uh, feature specific to the parcels at issue that would require some more in-depth analysis. But this gives them the opportunity to review that and tell us whether they approve or not. So the Environmental Management Agency, um, we've built in costs for the director position at an hour and a quarter, one and a half for the permit technician three, and another hour and 25 minutes for the permit technician, another permit technician three position. The reason that there are two of these positions is that they both have, they have, both have expertise and specific subject matters. The two EMA permit techs identified, uh, serve in different departments within EMA with discrete skill sets. One is from the environmental health well, and well-programmed, while the other tech is from onsite wastewater. So having all three of these staff members from this department engaged on the file is necessary. And, um, having their review for each modification, uh, will help us ensure that environmental rules and regulations are still being met if there's a change to a premises. Public Works fee has been structured similar to the, um, the building department. We've built in a, uh, cost allocation of half an hour for an administrative review. Again, that would allow them to be able to analyze the application and decide whether any additional permits are required based on the change being made. So we've built in a half hour for them to be able to do that. And if there isn't any additional permits that are required from Public Works, then they would be able to green light that and give us approval to move forward with the, uh, modification application. So summarizing here, um, this is the aggregate cost chart. And what we've taken is, is basically every component from the cooperating departments, including the Division of Cannabis Control, and added those together to arrive at a proposed fee of 700. and added those together to arrive at a proposed fee of $783. The Division of Cannabis Control included a resolution with this item that if approved by the Board of Supervisors would adopt this fee and give us the flexibility to allow the Building Department, for example, to be able to assess an additional inspection fee should they decide that that's required. And of course, if there are any additional permits that are required from Public Works or the Building Department, those would be required as a necessary step in approval of the modification. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board if there are any questions or anything that I can elaborate on. Ms. Callaway.
Mr. Wayland, did your kids sign that? Was that your kid's signature? Based on the type of cases or requests that you've been getting, do you think that, I'm assuming, I know you think it's a match, but if, let me back up one step, on the initial screening review, is there a charge for a person to have you do initial screening review?
For the modifications?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. It's built into this basic fee, the $783.
But if I just say I want to do something, could you just do, I thought you said you did initial screening review. I give you the $783, and you say, no, this isn't gonna work, you have to go back, or you don't qualify, or this doesn't qualify, based on your experience, do I get my $783 back? I mean, just for you to look at it, it cost me $783.
So, I think that the triggering event here is that we would require a modification if they are submitting a new site diagram. So, if all of those features that the state requires on the diagram that is submitted to the state for licensing in the first place, if any of that's changed, the state usually has an opportunity to weigh in on whether it would require a change from them, and if that's the case, that's one of the events that may lead to us getting the application. So if they are changing their state diagrams, we are going to require a modification. But we could also receive inquiries, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, we're happy to help guide applicants through the Chapter 1795 processes, and if they give us a call and they say, hey, we're contemplating making X, Y, or Z change, you know, we're of course gonna ask, have you submitted to the state to change your premises diagram, in which case, yes, we're going to require it. But that's also one of the things that may help, give them guidance on whether it's something that we have to see.
So if they make a, they want to take a row out, they have to go to the state first before they come to you?
Yes.
So, if they want to take a row out for this year or next year because of market conditions or whatever, they have to, now, if they want to put that row back in, they have to come back?
They do, yes. If they are making a change to their canopy, it's important for us because, I mean, a number of reasons, including all of the safety and compliance reasons in our county code, but also because Measure G tax is based on square footage, so anything that impacts the canopy area that they want to be permitted for, we have to see that.
So what are the type of application requests are you getting that you think will go through this process?
We think the most common types of changes are going to be changes to the type, not the type necessarily, but the size or location of a building, and we don't expect them to be major changes, they may just be situated a little differently than they had originally expected, because they're giving us their site diagrams at the very start of their application process. So, when contractor comes out, if it's not already built, but maybe they've diagrammed it, that building may look a little different, it may be 10 feet longer, three feet wider, something along those lines, and so we're expecting to see changes to buildings that they either have proposed or that they want to install, so we're expecting that. And it could be, not necessarily building, it could be a storage shed, it could be almost any feature that is used to store waste or any other tools that they use in their operation. But canopy change is going to be another one, and, you know, that's gonna be based on, so a lot of our permits were issued in 2020, and in 2020, we had a dryweight tax. So, their business was structured, because that's a major expense for the cannabis businesses, so they may have structured it in a way that there are wider aisles or, you know, some other way that it's laid out that they want to become more efficient. So they may try to either decrease that, or maybe they applied for too little and they want to increase that. So, now we're on a square footage tax, we're expecting to see some changes to canopy. That's another change that we expect. Far less common, and it's hard to speculate what it may be ultimately, because this is the first time we've had a modification fee, but they also have the ability to slightly move the canopy or buildings if that's something that they wanted to do. But we're not expecting that to be very common at all. In fact, I think, my opinion is that it's gonna be very rare, because all of their infrastructure is built around premises being located on a specific portion of their parcel. So if they were to change that, they would have to change the safety gates, fencing, roads, I mean, it all has to change. So, that's not gonna be very common. We're expecting modest changes, but I'll be able to report better on that in six months.
Thank you.
Any further board questions? Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just have a question. If you already have a permit and you have a site, you have a diagram of, and you're on a large acreage parcel, and you've issued a permit to somebody to do an additional grow on that property, and they submit a new site plan, and it's approved, good state, and then you issued a permit, does that go through this because they're changing it? Or does it go through the regular permit process? Or they pay both, because they are changing it, and they're adding an additional size? So, I want to be clear on which you pay or don't pay.
So, if they were just adding additional canopy, would be part of that?
Yeah, or another permit is issued to another grower that can be located on that acreage.
Well, if it's...
But they're expanding the area.
Well, if it's an expansion, the first thing that, you know, I think that the way this would fit under what this process entails is that they would be able to come in and apply for that. They would do this through the modification so that they can increase that canopy size. If they were applying for the limited distributor, that's a whole different application process, for instance, you know? So, it's gonna depend, and at some point in the future, I may want to come back to the Board for guidelines on, you know, how this application process will work, probably when we've had the benefit of some experience with the type of requests we're getting and seen quite a few of these.
No further board comments? I'll let it go to public comment.
Good morning, Board. Really appreciate the time that's been spent on this process. Two years ago, when we first submitted our applications, there was a lot of proposed buildings. We were all building out new properties, we were relocating. State guidelines have changed as well, so it's really important that we have the fluidity to change our sites. We have not been able to, we've submitted building permits months ago that have not been able to be processed because we were unable to change our site plans. Coupled with the fact that the supply chain of things like steel buildings has, you know, gone up 30% in cost, some of us have opted to make smaller buildings, which then triggered a change of our site plan, which has sent, triggered a hold on our building permits. So I hope that you will approve this, this is essential to an evolving industry, that we are able to make changes. I appreciate the time that the Cannabis Control Departments put forward with this, and I think it's gonna help move the industry forward and be able to process our gardens, as well as make changes that are for best business practices, so I appreciate your time.
Any further public comment?
There is no further public comment.
Well, then I'll bring it back to the Board. entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution establishing the application fee for the cannabis permit modifications.
Do we have a second?
Second.
With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a five-o vote of the Board. Thank you, Mr. Wayland.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. You're up next. Good to see you, Mr. DiBasilio.
Good afternoon, Sheriff's Officer. Thanks for taking your hat off, sir.
Yes, sir.
He's in the board chamber, isn't he? Take his hat off.
Please turn on your mics.
Item 15, informational item. Division of Cannabis Control, receive a status update on cannabis metrics and cannabis enforcement from the Division of Cannabis Control with participation from the Sheriff's Office. You want to come up here with us, Mr. DiBasilio? No, you don't.
Only if I can wear my hat.
I'll let you wear your hat.
Put it on.
Come on up.
Nowhere to sit.
Gee, what a shame.
We got a couple chairs. You looked it up?
Of course. It's background.
Okay. You want to give it five minutes real quick while you set up, or?
Yes, sir.
The anti-Mrs. Callaway firewall?
Yeah. Can I?
We're gonna go back and we're gonna start Agenda Item 15 again, informational item. Division of Cannabis Control, receive a status update on cannabis metrics and cannabis enforcement from the Division of Cannabis Control with a participation from the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wayland and Mr. DiBasilio.
Good morning again.
Can I please?
There we go. Good morning again. We are very happy to be able to come back to the Board to present a status update on the program. The last update to the Board was February 9th, and since that time, we've experienced a lot of growth in the industry and our permits. There's approximately 37% increase in square footage that's permitted since that date, and about a 40% increase in the maximum canopy tax revenue since that date. We've reached 60 permits, which was actually reduced to 59, we had a withdrawal, but nonetheless, the program has expanded, and we're seeing a lot of growth and success in our permitting process. Just to get started, I wanted to share a diagram of the county with supervisory districts that depicts where our cultivation sites currently are. So, this would be, this was actually generated this morning, this would reflect all 59 permits. You can see that there are quite a few in Mountain Ranch, up near Railroad Flat, in and around Milk Hill. We also have a few out in the Wallace-Bursen area, and then several strewn about District 4 down in the southwest. But I thought it would be helpful, just as a visual, to be able to kind of see where the locations are. And, just so that you're aware, we also can and intend to post this to our website so that it's available to view online. We've started a new tab, Information and Documents, so we'll be posting this there if anybody is interested in taking a close examination of it at a future date. So to start out with...
Excuse me, if a site, any one of those sites might have two or more permittees, does that dot, is each dot a permittee, or could one dot be two permittees?
I believe that each of those dots reflects one permittee, and they would be close in approximation, so, like, if you look at this, if you can see where my mouse is hovering, for instance, right here...
Oh, okay.
This is something, and I want to give thanks to our GIS staff for generating this, but this is something that I can clarify with them, it's not really, it's not really giving me the specific area, but it's in the middle. You can kind of see a cluster of spikes right here in the middle. But if it's not, that's something that I might be able to follow up with them on to be able to get a more granulated view of this. I'm happy to do that. So I thought we would start with financials. So again, we've been in operation for about a year and a half, roughly. Our first permit was issued May 18th, 2020, and we recently, as of two weeks ago, reached 60, although one of those permits was withdrawn, we are currently at 59. We have about 1,937,000 square feet of canopy. Yes, sir?
Are you doing enough of the presentation?
Okay. So again, approximately a year and a half since the cultivation permitting program really got underway, we reached 60 permits and have since gone back to 59. There are several permits that are very, very close to permitting and being validated by the DCC. I know that four of those today are just waiting on their state license, and I think that due to recent transitions at the state, they may expect some delays with that, but we've experienced a lot of growth this year. In terms of our application fees, this slide reflects what the total revenue that we've received this year from all of our applications is thus far, so that would be CVCBs, appeals, and cultivation main application fees. What's interesting is you'll see that the first quarter, the revenue tends to drop off steeply, because that's very late in the year. A lot of our applicants are outdoor, there's also mixed light, but they tend to not begin their application process during that time period, because it's very late in the season and it gets very hot here, and it's not, many of them will expect that if they're applying and they're reaching the permit stage, that they're going to have to get in a full season to be able to recoup the costs of entry into this and to be able to cover their tax exposure throughout the year. So, the revenue tends to increase throughout the year. You can see the second quarter, and then the third quarter, which is January, March of the fiscal year, that number goes up significantly. In fact, that's four times the amount from the first quarter, and then the fourth quarter, it goes up again before falling off back down. It's our experience and our expectation that we're going to see this cycle again this year. Although there's some trends in our permitting, that's interesting, we're seeing an increase in mixed light applications, but I'll get to that a little later on. This gives you a little bit more detail on where our revenue is coming from. Again, we're a fee-funded department, the application fees that are paid by... The application fees that are paid by the business owners and applicants is what goes to pay for our operational costs. We do not rely on general fund revenue. The main application fees, of course, is our largest source of revenue. And in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we received six hundred three thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Revenue for the continuation fees thus far, seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. This would reflect the vast majority of our permits that were issued in twenty twenty because the last one, I believe, that was issued was in August of twenty twenty, which was, I believe, August sixth. So almost all of our permits have paid their permit fee thus far to continue their permit for the next year. The revenue for CVCBs has gone up significantly. We've seen an increase in CVCB applications, especially in the last couple of months. And the total revenue for that is forty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then our appeal revenue is eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. And again, the grand total, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So this just gives a little bit more detail on where that revenue is coming from. As far as our expenses go, because the first quarter also would be the, the least busy for us in terms of new applications, our, our expenses are also, they will correlate to that. So we've only had eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars of expense in the first quarter. And that would include our salaries at the Division of Cannabis Control, essentially our overhead and chargebacks to other county departments who are doing the reviews and processing these applications. Just like the revenue, the expenses go up throughout the fiscal year, up to the fourth quarter, where we had a hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars of expense. The total is just under four hundred thousand dollars for expenses. So of those expenses, the DCC salaries are three hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Services and supplies, which includes our fixed overhead costs and other expenses such as computers and desks, was thirty thousand nine hundred and four dollars. And then reimbursement to cooperating departments, forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. What's interesting to note about this is that a lot of the times, if we're receiving an application in the third or fourth quarter of a fiscal year, those applications, in a next slide, we're going to see that the average processing time, except for outlining timelines where they waited a year to get their permit, is approximately five months. So even though there is more revenue than we had expenses in twenty twenty-one, that revenue is going to be applied to those permit applications going forward as they continue through the processing. So it crosses over fiscal years. And that holds true for any applications that are left over from twenty twenty or the applications that just got started in twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yes.
That total income number that you had, how many permit applications does that represent?
Well, we had about two hundred in total, of which I think around thirty-four were withdrawn and several denied. So I think that the remaining number, I may have to look back at, at our records and get you that number, but it's-
But it's substantially more than the sixty permits you've issued. So the rest are still in the circuit being gone through?
Yes, sir. When I, when I looked at the numbers earlier today, I think it was just under fifty percent that are still in an applied status. So they haven't been issued, they haven't withdrawn, and they haven't been denied. But that's a statistic that I can, I can probably get you some more exact, better numbers on. So this just shows you the amount of revenue that we have left for applications that were received in calendar year twenty twenty-one. So for those remaining applications that are yet to be processed completely, we have about three hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars of revenue left to be able to operate and process those. And this just gives you a snapshot of our, the current status. So there are three under review, sixteen with corrections needed, and forty-three conditional approvals. So if you add the bottom four categories, those are all the applications that haven't been denied, withdrawn or issued. So that would show you the number of applications that essentially we're still working on. That's where the revenue would be applied, towards our operational expenses and reimbursing county departments for their review of those. The conditional approvals are the closest to permitting. They have gone through our screening, our preliminary review. They've paid their main application fee and they are in the process of being approved by the cooperating county departments, ultimately reaching permitting once that's done and they've received their state license. So those conditional approvals, those forty-three, those, those are the ones who have paid their fee and are closest to permitting. And included in those would be the four that I referred to earlier that are just waiting on their state license. This is a timeline for all of our permits that have been issued to date. And the average shows two hundred and forty-seven days, but if you look at the, the bar graph, you'll see that several of them double the amount of time, probably because these were permits that applied either in late twenty nineteen or in some point in twenty twenty and decided to wait the season out to get permitted in closer to the time that they'd be able to plant. So it could be a number of factors and it isn't necessarily just that. It could also be, for example, someone who's waiting on their state provisional license. So, but if you, if you look at sort of the, the median timeline in there, that's what we use to estimate. The timeline to go from application to permit and state license is somewhere around a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty days. And that's what you see the most of in this graph. But this shows you the timeline for all of our permits. To date, we've denied nineteen in total. That's about nine and a half percent of the applications received. Again, there's somewhere around two hundred applications that we've received. The basis for denials is the same as we've experienced in the past. Either there's a transfer insufficiency, such as a prior code case, or more often, there may be a sheriff warrant that was executed at the prior registrant's property. We've, we've really been grateful for assistance from the Sheriff's Office in providing us information about that. And we've been able to identify and enforce this portion of seventeen nine five, resulting in several of those, of those denials, but it's an essential part of our, our ordinance mandate and, and we follow that closely. There's other issues that come up. Prior registration was denied or a CDFA license was not issued or applied for properly. That tends to come up as well, but the total is nineteen. Our number of CVCBs has increased. As I said, in the last couple of months, we've seen a spike in applications. There are a total of four hundred and forty-one applications. Three hundred and eighty-one of those have been issued, eight denied, eighteen revoked, and thirty-four in process. But this shows that workforce of workers and owners who have been through our background process and received their CVCB badge, it shows that it's working and they are following through at the process and building out that workforce. I think that this is a really good statistic. And personally, having visited cannabis cultivation sites, each time that I've been, they have had their badges with them. So I'm, I think that this program, as far as chapter nine two-two goes, has been working well for us. And I'm encouraged by the number of, of issued CVCBs that we've got today, and that number is still going up. So we put together some statistics about the rights to apply. Again, when the program was established, we estimated that somewhere between a hundred and ninety and two hundred rights to apply existed based upon the eligibility criteria in seventeen nine five. Today, we estimate that the number utilized is seventy-four to seventy-eight percent. And the total rights to apply left to utilize is probably somewhere between forty-two and fifty-two or twenty-two to twenty-six percent out of the estimated number that would be available. So it's building out nicely. And those rights to apply that have been utilized in the process, we, we work to try to process those applications in our screening and review fairly quickly. And I think that a lot of them have been, at this point, utilized. There are still some out there, but this shows that the program is building out. So this will give you a more detailed view of our issued permits. To date, there are thirty-eight outdoor. The indoor is two permitted still, but we have a few indoor applications pending right now. Mixed light is one that's increased in proportion to the remainder. And there are nineteen permitted right now. And the totals are three hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty square feet for mixed light, seventeen fifty indoor, and one million five hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred and thirty-one square feet for the outdoors, for a total of one million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet. Just to go over some Measure G basics again, this is something that we try to address each time that we have the opportunity. Because it is new and it differs significantly from Measure C, it was a county ballot measure, voter-approved on November third, sixty-four to thirty-six percent, and became operative on January first. So this is the taxing law for Calaveras County right now for cannabis businesses. And it's a cultivation tax based on canopy square footage. And it's important to note that the tax payments are due on a quarterly calendar year basis. So the first payment was due in the month of April, and this is the last week to pay Measure G tax for the second quarter of the calendar year. It will end at the end of July. So it's an important point to put out there. And we try to keep the industry as aware as possible on this, and we'll be addressing it again in our next industry workshop. In fact, we also sent out a notice a week and a half ago or so, just to make sure that people are aware that this tax is due. So the current Measure G maximum revenue for current permits is four million two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, and this is for cultivation. And I emphasized and bolded the maximum language because we are still a new program. We've been operating for a year and a half. The industry is learning how our taxing regulations work. And in the first quarter, I estimate that between fifteen and twenty percent, we experienced a deficiency of between fifteen and twenty percent in tax payments. And we're currently in the process of working with the tax collector and trying to shore that up. But it, that is a, a reality of, of the taxing program, is that sometimes people may, may make a mistake about the timing of when the payment is due. There are other factors at issue, including, you know, for example, that one of our permits was withdrawn. I think that we're still a little early in the process to be able to accurately tell you what tax revenue will look like over the next six months to a year, but we will have better data on that soon. But that's why I use, use the word maximum revenue, because this is what the permits say that the tax due would be. But there is also a margin of error for deficiencies that the county has to enforce, as well as any possible reduction in the number of permits that we have, things like that. So it's, I wanted to put this out there with caution because this is what the permits dictate would be the tax, but there are always, there's always a margin of error in these numbers. And again, in the first quarter of twenty-one, we experienced a deficiency of somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent on those payments.
Has that changed with the following quarterly payments?
I asked for data on that this morning, but it's going to take a while and a lot of them wait till, you know, it's, it's, the, the time period for them to make those payments doesn't end until the end of this week. So some of those are still coming in. So I'd like to be able to give you numbers on that, but I, at this point, it's a little premature to be able to give you something accurate. Thank you.
Eric, I do have a question. Since this is quarterly, when, when does it start? The minute you issue a permit?
Yes. So once they get a permit, assuming that it's somewhere in the middle of a quarter because it's never going to be January first, at least I hope I'm not issuing a permit on January first, but the, the time period would start at that point and they would be prorated for that quarter. So that's actually a really good point because a lot of our permits, I, I mentioned earlier, we had a thirty-seven percent increase in square footage since February ninth and forty percent in maximum revenue from that date, but a lot of those were issued during that quarter. So it'll be prorated.
It'll be prorated from whatever date they issue.
Correct. In fact, I think that the, the maximum revenue from Q one was around seven hundred and three thousand. We had a deficiency of somewhere around a hundred and seven thousand, so that's where I got the fifteen to twenty percent from. But as we go along, the industry learns the new tax process and we refine our process, that's something that I think that we'll see improvement on.
Or the alternative, they don't come into the full payment, then at that point, they potentially lose their permit?
Correct. In fact, there's a provision in, in our tax ordinance that says that two or more pay, two or more missed cycles, and that's one of the benefits of having it quarterly, is that we get a status on where things, you know, stand with that at more intervals. So if there's been a non-payment for more than two or two, then that would then be a, a condition for revoking. So it's a, it's, it's definitely something that we want to make the industry and public aware of, and we will be making this presentation again in more detail very soon with an industry update. We do try to also send them notices in advance of due dates. Again, about ten days ago, we sent out an email letting them know that there were a couple of weeks left and we got a couple of inquiries back. So we know that this is a, this is an approach that's going to be effective in making people aware. So if you take those maximum tax revenues based on the cultivation permits, that works out to about one million fifty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. Looks like I have a typo on the end there. But that's, that's what the quarterly installments do would be. And that's again, the maximum canopy revenue. So that does not take into account any, any deficiencies in payments or loss of permits that may occur throughout the, the year. And also, that does not take into account permits that may have been issued during the calendar, or, calendar year quarter. So that's just the maximum revenue that the current permits say that the county would receive based upon the square footage of their canopy. And again, that's a forty percent increase since February ninth. But by contrast, it's about, between February ninth and our last update on August eighteenth, twenty twenty, there was only an eleven percent increase. So that, that reinforces the cyclical application process and permitting process. That's also reflected in the revenue and costs in our department because things slow down after July. So I wanted to provide the board with a legislative update. A couple of weeks ago, the governor signed AB one forty-one. It overhauled a lot of the, the provisions regulating the cannabis industry, but one of the ones that I wanted to include in here, just as a public awareness item, is that it's making significant changes to the provisional licensing that the state now, all consolidated under the Department of Cannabis Control, would be able to issue. So the provisional licenses for new- So the provisional licenses for new ones, they've given a sunset date on being able to issue those of June thirtieth, 2022. The ordinance or the regulation has become significantly more convoluted than it was before. And I would encourage applicants to consult with a professional of their choosing or pay close attention and analyze this to see if it impacts them, because there are timelines now on provisional licenses that we're not necessarily in the old version of this law. And I think that's significant for us, because when we last presented on this as a board item, where afterwards, the board sent a letter in support of SB fifty-four, there were ninety percent of our licenses were provisional licenses. Today, it's more like eighty-seven percent. But this is an issue that should be on everyone in the industry's radar, and making sure that they're familiar with these rules and are able to participate as much as possible in their licensing process with the state, because there are progress reports kind of built into the provisional license applications when they come up for renewal. So it's complex, and it's something that they need to pay attention to.
What is the state trying to accomplish with this?
Well, I think that, I think there's a couple of things that they were concerned about. They may not be issues that so much are relevant to Calaveras County, but in a lot of other jurisdictions, they're concerned about the environmental impacts in terms, not just that there are, but that they are showing progress with complying with their CECL requirements or their compliance with Fish and Wildlife regulations. That's what they've put into this, and so that's why I'm expressing to you that my opinion is that they wanted to see progress. And so that's one of the things I think applicants can do to help themselves, is to see these itemized things that the state is now looking for, and make sure that they're complying with this on a timeline that will likely help them meet, you know, the deadlines. So I think that that's a big component of this. And also, I mean, if I were to offer another opinion about this, I think that the provisional licensing, you know, long-term, in terms of years, you know, may be something that the state intends to utilize less often or potentially start to phase out, because they want to start seeing people reach their annual licenses. But those are just, those are just my opinions based upon reading this. And I think we'll learn a lot more over time.
I brought a lot of this to your attention when they brought forward AB one four one. A lot of it's pushed by more southern counties, such as Santa Barbara County and others. And it's, you know, as Greg expressed, moving on beyond the provisional license, that's why there's a sunset date on it. That's absolutely what they're trying to do. It's not, honestly, along with a lot of other things the state's put forward, there hasn't been a lot of thought behind this and how they're going to move forward with it. They're just putting sunset dates on things. And the one that's even more so than the June thirtieth is the January first of 2022 deadline for contiguous parcels. And that one, that one's just abrupt to the point where it's going to halt a lot of things moving forward if someone doesn't have their applications in prior to the first of next year.
Yes, I agree. And that's one of the reasons that we'll be making a presentation on this at the next industry workshop to try to go through it in more detail, because there are some hard timelines involved in this that our permit holders need to be aware of. So one of the, one of the issues that I wanted to address today is something that it's kind of a legacy cost in terms of, you know, Prop sixty-four. When it was passed, in the state of California, some studies estimate that there were somewhere around sixty thousand unlicensed businesses in the state. And one of the things that our permit holders do is they go through our rigorous permitting process to pay their fees, they comply with our laws, and they pay their taxes. However, we're seeing a lot of interest at the state level now, turning back to the issue of unlicensed businesses, and trying to strengthen laws that may help local jurisdictions, as well as cities, help enforce the rules so that our permit holders can operate on a level playing field, and fairly, because they follow the rules and they pay their taxes. One example of that is AB eleven thirty-eight. If adopted, it would, if approved, it would amend Business and Professions Code two six zero three eight, which gives a civil cause of action to the county council. And basically, what this provision did, or would do, is expand the ability to apply these penalties of up to thirty thousand dollars for each violation and other enforcement mechanisms to not just persons directly involved, but persons who aid and abet in the conduct. I think that it's a, it's a, it's a policy issue and a legislative item that is worth pointing out and bringing up for public awareness purposes and to update the board on, because I am seeing a lot more interest at the state level in amending legislation to make our laws more effective towards combating illegal cannabis operations.
How would that, how would that work? Greg, how would that work?
My, my understanding, my understanding is that it would be, it would give the county a cause of action to impose penalties if there were, for instance, a retailer that was operating without a license and without a local permit, to be able to impose monetary fines on them. So it's a cause of action to be able to penalize the conduct monetarily.
For an illegal grow, would that be someone who delivered dirt?
No. There's specific provisions in the legislation that, and I should have prefaced this with, this is, I wanted to give a broad overview of this, but it's something that I can certainly look at in more detail and possibly bring back an item to the board so that I can give you more detail on it. But it wouldn't, in my, in my view, based on reading it, it wouldn't necessarily be someone who is just very tangentially associated with it. But we're talking about, for example, a property owner who knew or should have known, or an absentee business owner who finances, things like that. That's my understanding. But I am certainly happy to provide more detail on this.
This is proposed, right? This is not law?
Yes, sir. It's not passed, and it's still, and it's still being edited. There was a provision in it that has to do with what's called preemption. So it's, it would not have, it would have expressly not prohibited local jurisdictions from adopting similar local legislation, but that's been stricken out. There's another provision in this that is pretty significant. And except for jurisdictions with a population of over seven hundred and fifty thousand, only the Attorney General, the Attorney General's office can enforce this, based on the current version of this. So it may be something that the board is interested in having brought back, possibly with participation from county council for insights. But I wanted to just make you aware of it, because it's pending.
Is it more focused towards the retail side than the cultivation side?
No. It has, I think that it's broader than that. It has to do with cannabis activities. But in terms of having a fixed and systematic continuous location, you know, I think that that would be where it's really more effective, because they can identify property owners, they can identify business, or people that may be financially invested in the site, for example. So I just use retailers as an example.
Okay, understood.
So getting back to what Supervisor Karamendi asked, somebody delivers fertilizer or dirt to a grow site, knowing that it's an illegal grow site, they would not be held to this?
I think that that is, that's going to be a very fact-intensive question. It's probably going to involve a prosecutor, a county council, making a judgment call on how much they actually attribute it or how provable the case is. But I'm really, I'm giving that opinion sort of as a preliminary, just a broad view of this. And I'm, you know, it would take more analysis for me to come back and give you something more concrete on how that may look when it's being utilized.
Supervisor Callaway, the language, as Mr. Whelan indicated, the current statute that's on the books provides for the Attorney General to do this. If this bill is passed, that would extend to potentially at least some local jurisdictions. But the language, I believe, is the same, and it's a person engaging in commercial cannabis activity without a license. So if you're somebody who is engaging in commercial cannabis activity and should have a license to do that, but doesn't, that's who's subject to the provisions of this statute.
Yeah.
Ms. Callaway, if I can speak to that too. And the way I've understood this law, as I've been following it also, is it does, as you mentioned, Jack, it goes after the illegal growers. So the people that are growing illegally and never have attempted to even get permits, I think that gives us another leg up, along with the people that are running out of compliance. But the way I'm reading this, it's more focused towards the illegal growers. And that's their whole purpose, is try and get rid of the illegal growers so that the legal growers are not being impacted by that. So that's the understanding that I have through CSSA.
So in terms of we go in and we eradicate an illegal grow site, then they'll be charged also, I got, oh, the thirty thousand dollars for that violation? The people that we arrest or cite?
It would take, it would take a little bit more analysis for me to be able to offer an opinion about how that would interface with the law enforcement side. It would, it would involve a little bit more analysis. So, you know, I would, I would have to offer to bring this back and to talk about it in some more detail, and to coordinate with the sponsors of the bill to be able to talk this through with them.
So are you making a recommendation that we support or not support, or ask for modification to eleven thirty-eight? Or just stay neutral at this point?
I think that if the board had interest in giving this further evaluation, what the direction could be is to have me bring it back with a, with a potential letter of support and possible recommendations from the county on what you would like to see changed in the legislation, possibly to lower the threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand residents to allow local jurisdictions to enforce this if they choose. Just to have the ability to do that may be significant alone. So that would be, if anything, my, my recommendation, if you were interested in that.
Maybe that's something you and county council, since it'll put more work in her office, but she's not playing in a band, so she has the time, or NRCO, to decide whether it should, and maybe the chair and vice chair, and whether it should come back.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to do that.
Ms. Callaway, just a little more information on it. There's actually a provision out there that the state's Cannabis Control Department can, and we've had them out on some of our sites already in the county, that were illegal sites. And what they do is they find them the cost of whatever their permit would have been. So let's say it's a fifteen thousand dollar permit for their grow site. They times that by three. So it's a forty-five thousand dollar fine that the state can impose upon that illegal grow site. We haven't seen it happen. We have two cases right now that I'm aware of, that they're working on doing that. So I'll let you know how the outcome is on that. But that's something that the state has the ability to do right now. But that's not the county's ability at this point.
Is there any other comments or questions that I can answer? Okay. So, moving on, I just wanted to outline some of the key differences between the licensed and unlicensed operators. Our local permitted cannabis businesses comply with local and state CECL regulations protecting the environment, comply with building and fire protection standards, and are subject to inspection. They provide jobs that are subject to background checks and labor laws. They pay local taxes benefiting the county's general fund. The unpermitted businesses do not comply with environmental regulations. In fact, there's, there's reports out of Southern California counties of certain pesticides being used that are very harmful to the environment. They don't comply with building and fire standards. They have no standards of labor, for labor, or comply with the local background checks. And they do not pay taxes. So in my view, they essentially flaunt the local regulations and local public safety rules. And there's something that I think is an important enough issue that I wanted to bring it up today and be able to present on it for public awareness. Studies indicate that between seventy and eighty-five percent of all cannabis sales in California are still from illegal retailers. So when Prop sixty-four passed, the state began developing programs that would regulate the industry. But the illegal cannabis operators and retailers are still a scourge on local jurisdictions. And they compete with our permit holders, who comply with all of the rules and pay our taxes. So it's an important public policy issue that I wanted to make a part of our presentation today, which leads me to possible local controls that are being utilized today and work. One of those is public awareness. Public being aware of what's, what's going on in their neighborhoods and in the rural parts of the county, and being able to report on that if they see something. Industry participation is something that I want to look to foster some more, being able to work with the industry to report conduct that they feel may be suspicious. Because again, these operators do not work on a level playing field with them. They don't follow the rules. And I think that it's something that's important for, for them to play an active role in as well. As well as the Calaveras County Sheriff's Met Team, I'm very grateful that we have a team of sheriff's deputies at our sheriff's office who have been efficient and effective in addressing the local illegal permit, illegal growers. I asked for just a brief period of time to create a snapshot about what they do. Between March and June of 2021, the sheriff's met team executed twelve warrants at illegal residential indoor grows. The average home value was six hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. So they, these are high-end homes, some of which were in the eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollar range. Thirty-six percent of them were purchased in 2020, forty-five percent between 2016 and 2019, demonstrating a targeted purpose for the purchases. In addition to the indoor operations, the sheriff's team executed twenty-four warrants at outdoor illegal cannabis grows. And there were approximately twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine plants destroyed at those. So what this demonstrates to me is, at least, Calaveras County can share that with some of the other counties who are experiencing these operations targeting their, the local jurisdiction. And the local enforcement effort from the sheriff's office has been exemplary, as far as I've seen, in my opinion. And it's something that I wanted to point out today as well. I will add that about ninety percent of these homes were purchased with financing, which shows accessibility, because it's relatively less of a burden for them to obtain one of these properties if they're able to obtain financing, although many of them have also been purchased with cash outright. So it was an important issue that I wanted to bring up to the board today. I'm grateful that the sheriff has made himself available if there are any questions or any more detail that the board would like to see regarding the sheriff's met team operations. But other than that, I thank you for hearing our presentation. I'm more than happy to answer any questions or take any policy guidance that you would like, potentially on things that you would like to see in the future or any direction that you would like to give to the Division of Cannabis Control.
Can a permitee get a license but not grow? Can a perma-tie get a license but not grow? Go through the whole process of getting the license and just say, "I'm gonna wait a year till I put plants in the ground"?
If they have a permit issued and validated, they would not be able to, I mean, they, technically, they could, I mean, they could, but they would be assessed a tax from the moment that their permit is issued and validated.
So even though there's nothing, they have no crop, they would still pay the tax?
Yes. In fact, a lot of our permits today, if you, you know, when you inspect the sites, you'll notice that although they've diagrammed the permitted area that they intend to cultivate in, that's their cultivation area, there's, there's an unutilized portion of that that tends to be at least around 25% because they have areas in between that they, you know, they need to be able to traverse across or, you know, care for their, their crop. But the tax is based on the permitted square footage, and that's based on the square footage that they've diagrammed, and they have the right to cultivate in it. So, so, I mean, if you take that to an extreme, in theory, yes, if they did not have plants, then if they have the permit and they have the canopy area that's been permitted by the DCC, they would, they would pay a tax on that area.
So, could they ask to have the permit become effective in six months or a year? Because, I mean, it's expensive to go in to apply, and then it's expensive to set up the property to cultivate?
Yes.
And they, can they do that, or, I'm, I'm just...
I think, I think that if someone had obtained, they've, they've complied with all of our rules and they've been issued but not yet validated, so if they had gone to the point where they've complied with all of the local register, regulations, and, and even obtained their state license, as far as we are concerned, in that situation, which hasn't happened yet, I would probably, I would probably be willing to accommodate that because there's really, you know, it's, it's, it's their application and it's their per, their permit at that point to decide when they want to be issued.
Another question on the distillery, I mean, you mentioned that there's retail operations that are buying or selling, that illegally grow. Are dispensaries, I don't know what's the proper term that we call them, retail stores, are they inspected to see whether they are or they're not?
They, all of our, all of our cannabis businesses are, are inspected.
But how do you know if they're selling illegal or illegal?
A lot of that, a lot of that, we would rely on track and trace. The Department of Cannabis Control also conducts, conducts inspections, and when they do that, their inspections are going to be based on large part of what their system says is an inventory or being sold at the premises. And so, and then there's also the, the practical, I mean, it may be just an observation, but these businesses are highly invested in their, in their operations, and I've, the, the main sentiment that I get is that they would not do anything knowingly to jeopardize that.
No, but that's in Calaveras, but they're doing it in other counties or cities, because you said that's an issue.
Yes. I mean, if you look at a county, I, I haven't studied San Bernardino in great detail right now. I'm aware that they recently passed a resolution asking the legislature to increase criminal penalties because they've had a great deal of cultivation issues down there in the desert, burying things and using chemicals they shouldn't. In June, there was a, an operation conducted jointly between several enforcement agencies, and I believe they destroyed somewhere around $1.2 billion worth of cannabis. So, I, you know, in, in counties like that, I think that it's, it's a little different, and especially in a county like San Bernardino, which in the unincorporated areas, they shouldn't have any businesses. So, it's just kind of a little different there. But as far as we're concerned locally, our cannabis businesses, our retailers and cultivators, get local inspections, including a random inspection by our code staff, and they also get inspected by the Department of Cannabis Control, so.
Have one more. Cannabis isn't considered an ag product in Calaveras, correct? We haven't made that decision?
I don't believe so.
Why don't we? And that's maybe a question for the board. I mean, what's the advantage or disadvantage of whether it's an ag product or not?
Ms. Callaway, I can talk to that, it goes back to the Williamson Act. You lose a lot if you do that.
But if we say that, and I thought the state said that cannabis wasn't, because, I'm, I'm gonna have to ask you all to correct me. The state said that cannabis is an ag product, but it is, does not qualify for the Williamson Act.
I missed that one, I'm not sure, I can't answer some of that.
And so, if that's the case, and the state says it's an ag product, why we can't say it's also an ag product?
I didn't know that the state made it an ag product at this point.
Can I speak to that a little bit, Supervisor Callaway?
Who's talking to me?
That's Julie.
Ms. Julie Moss Lewis, yes, please.
Oh, Ms. Moss Lewis.
The, the state leaves it up to the county, you know, for the state's purposes, it's, it's somewhat irrelevant. We are allowed to determine whether or not we deem it ag. I'm sorry, I have a feedback, is somebody talking to me? No, I guess it's just feedback. So, I mean, we've, we've chosen not to make it ag because we did not want to give it the same protection against nuisances, we didn't want to give it the same income requirements as some of our other ag industries, because it takes so little of it to generate income in a small area. So, it's a policy decision for the board, but there are some pros and cons that the board had spoken about in the past that led the board to decide that it wasn't a good idea to do that locally.
That was then, I'm just wondering if, I mean, I remember if times have changed, and it's something we would want to consider, that's, I'm just, maybe that's up for further staff discussion? Because I'm not clear on why we wouldn't, or why we would leave it as it is. So, thank you.
I just, I think, right now, leaving it as it is, is probably more prudent. We'd have to do a major overhaul of our, of our code. Also, originally, when they were bringing this up, it was part of the taxation and how they're gonna move forward, so it, you know, at this time, just switching it to ag, I don't personally see it as a prudent course. I mean, maybe in the future, after we overhaul a lot of our code, it may be something we may want to revisit at that time.
Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you, Rita, I think we should take that up at some point in the future. Having followed up on the code compliance conversation last week, it went over my mind many times, maybe not right away, but I'd be open at some point in the future. Maybe a little further out than that. Greg, my questions are, first off, congratulations on this program coming together. I know it's been a lot of work for you and your team, and it looks like it's coming together.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've got 441 employees here, and as soon as we exceed the workforce of the county, then that'd be good. We've created an industry bigger than ourselves, which is, thank you to the, to the people who are investing and working on this, and, as well as your work. And I, on the tools, you know, I think that when we get to legislative, as that continues to evolve, I would like to be kept up to date on that. I'd like to have tools available for the sheriff and for our local to go after this. You know, if somebody's leasing out their land to an illegal grower, they're accomplice to this, and they should be not able to say, "Well, that's not me, that was that guy", and, boy, who is that that's been in my backyard? So, I appreciate you keeping, finding the tools, because the deal we've, I feel we've always got with our community is we're gonna do regulated cannabis, and we're going to get rid of the bad guys.
Yeah.
So, working with the sheriff is key. There was, to that end, under Prop 64, there were certain funds that were going to become available to counties and jurisdictions that participated in the, in the cannabis scheme, and I wanted to know, are we applying for those, are we getting help from the state? There's something more around environmental regulations and enforcement, and I want to make sure that we're not leaving state money, which is paid for by cannabis taxes on the table, when it could help our county. Do you have any, any information on how we're doing on that?
So, that's a great point, and, and that's something that I think, you know, if there's resources available to us, we need to be looking into that and making sure that we have every, every tool that's available to us to run our program the right way. So, that's something that I'll look into some more, and I'll be able to report back to you.
I appreciate that, because as I read these laws, they're, they're to, 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 to support organizations like ours that are doing the right thing and doing it correctly. And, you know, there was a lot of money that came out of this recent budget to help counties that were trying to get their act together. Our act is together, so I want to be at the front of the line if we can.
Yes, sir, understood.
Thank you.
Any further board questions or comments? I have one for Mr. De Vassilia. Do you see a transition with the illegal cultivation of going more towards indoors at this time?
I don't know if there's a transition, but there's a certain time of year where the indoors definitely get bigger, just for the simple fact that, and I, let me clarify that, I don't know that they get bigger, we focus on them more because the outdoor grows are not going on, and we get more reports during the wintertime, because as winter settles in, the air gets heavier and the, the odor from the residents lingers more, so we get more reports from, from property owners nearing, you know, in between the homes. So that makes our, we work more in the wintertime towards those indoor grows, just because of the calls for service that we get, and the fact that the outdoor grows are pretty much shut down because they're outdoor grows.
That makes sense. Do, with, with, you know, you working towards these ends for years now, and, you know, support from the county with the Met Team and building it up, do you feel like there's been success that we, you know, the message is getting out that it's not easy to do business in Calaveras County if you aren't following the rules?
I, I think the, the message is getting out, but the problem is we're, we still have those illegal growers that are gonna come in and, and try to fly underneath the radar. As Mr. Whelan stated, the amount of homes that we've had just on the indoors. I have some quick stats, if you'd like, I can go over what we've done so far. Last year, we did 77 grows to date, and this is current as of this morning, we've done 48 grows. We've eradicated this year so far over 40,000 plants, 1,500 pounds of processed marijuana, four pounds of concentrated marijuana, made 44 arrests, we've received, we've seized 18 firearms, and we're using our tractor to do these grows, some of these grows, the outdoor grows. We've, percentages from 20 to 21, right now, to date, we're at 62% of radic, sites eradicated as opposed to last year, so we're already more than halfway to where we were last year. 55% on search warrants, let's see here, we've got, we're up 117% from PG&E warrants, which goes to those indoor grows, and we invited Mr. Whelan out to one of our indoor, couple of our indoor grows, so he got firsthand of what they're doing to these, these homes. We're up over 108% on our plant count. Last year, we were at 37,000, again, we're over 40,000 right now. Processed marijuana, we're 74% of where we were last year. Concentrated, we're at 17%. We're up 105% from arrests last year compared to last year. And then, indoor cultivation sites per year, I'll do 18, we'd had seven, 19, we've had 15, in 20, we did 10, and to date, we're already at 15. And here's some repeated eradication sites. We've had 31 sites that have been eradicated multiple times. We have, we've had two sites eradicated five times, one site eradicated four times, three sites eradicated three times, and 25 sites eradicated at least twice.
Sheriff, I don't want to interrupt you, but that's pretty annoying, I'm sure, for you and certainly for us.
Why?
Why, and what are we gonna do about it?
Well, it, it goes back to, the why is because once we've eradicated a site, these property owners, and that's kind of what Mr. Whelan was talking about, being able to go after these guys on the financial side, they just lease to somebody else, or they're doing it, but they're just bringing in other workers. Because the workers that we have there are just at their workers, they get arrested and/or they get cited, and we never see them again. So, they're just bringing in more people. The key is gonna be going after the property owners to prove that they're the ones that are financing these sites. That's gonna be the key. We've been working with Mr. Whelan, and he talked about the, the fact that we go, when we go to a site, once we've been to a site and we've eradicated via a search warrant, that site's been black flagged, basically, so he knows not to, you know, make it a legal site, but we're trying to work with the DA so that we can get some avenues to start going after the property owners. Because they, they're, if we've gone to a site five times, they clearly know that they're not supposed to be growing there. And then, the last thing I really have for you is costs. I know we're always worried about costs. The cost on an average, now mind you, this is an average, for a site is $8,200 per site. Pre-eradication's about $1,800, the execution is around $3,700, post-eradication's about $2,700. So, to date, we've spent about $394,000 in eradications. Last year, we were at about $650,000 in costs to eradicate these sites. So, and we've gained some big strides. Those numbers have come down because we've mechanic, how do you say that word, mechanic eyes? We bought the tractor, we bought the tractor, we're not using hand clippers anymore, we went out and bought cordless sawzalls, takes down plants a lot faster, so we're not on sites as long, we're not having to fight with the, the wire and the plastic wraps that they put around these plants to hold their plants up. So, we've really streamlined the property, our staff has gotten way better than we were even back in 2016. So, technology has helped us, and just the fact of doing it has helped us able to eradicate these plants anymore. We've gone from eradicating one site a day to sometimes now up to three sites a day, and we're doing sometimes nine and 10 sites a week. So our guys are busting their butts to get this thing done. So, it is a big impact, and it's gonna continue to be an impact, obviously, the more people I can put on, the more, the Met Team, the more people, or the more sites we can eradicate, and if we can start going after them financially, it's gonna be huge. That, that's, you start hitting these people in the pocketbooks, and the folks that are doing this legally, it's gonna benefit them, they do help us out, give us information, just because it benefits them, everything's, you know, on the down low from them, we don't advertise that who it is that's telling us this information, but they do help. So, it, it's a collaborative effort between all of us, so.
Well, maybe when you sell one of those houses, you'll be able to afford...
Well, here's the problem with that, and just, so you know, there was, if you remember back a couple of years ago, there was a big bust between El Grove, Sacramento, and we had 14 homes in our county that were all done through a Chinese national bank, and they were, they were all done, it's all going through the feds, we're still waiting to see the red... We're still waiting to see the revenues from that. It's, it's just, it's taken them forever, and I'm constantly, well, McGregor Scott was still in his seat, I was calling him constantly, trying to find out where our funds were going to be to help our, to support our program, but we haven't seen any of that. Now, if we can get that on a local jurisdiction, it's a little bit different, and I've talked to Ms. Yook about that. The problem with going after homes is the timeframe that it takes to get it done for the foreclosures. We have to, the county's going to have to maintain that property. There's a whole lot more to that. So, there's other avenues, I think, that we can go after to financially support this program.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. De Vassilia.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wayland. Public comment?
Yes, we have Ms. Ranki.
Hello, Ms. Ranki.
Vicky, are you there? Vicky, can you hear us? Vicky, if you can hear us, you have permission to speak.
Is there anybody else for a public comment while Ms. Ranki finds her mute button?
While we're just waiting for her, if she comes on. Sheriff, where are the plants taken that you eradicate?
IWF.
We take them to a residence in Forest Meadows.
Calvera Springs.
That's exactly what I thought.
No, they actually all get transported down to our landfill, and they get buried. And this, the product, the marijuana plant, has so much moisture and stuff in it, when you put, we put it in the ground about six feet down, and we cover it up, within about 15 minutes, it turns to mush, it's not worth anything at that point. But we stand around and make sure that it's secured, so, but it all goes to the local landfill.
Thank you.
What are you doing when you stand around?
Not breathing.
Don't breathe.
Oh, and for the people that have always asked the question, why doesn't the sheriff's office sell what we confiscate? The federal government might frown on that a little bit if the sheriff's offices were selling marijuana, because it is still a Schedule I drug as far as they're concerned.
There's that, and the fact that illegal grows do not necessarily use the chemicals that are good for you and everything else. Yeah, there's plenty of good reasons why not to.
I don't know, I think it's a good idea.
Ms. Ranki, are you there?
Well, then we'll have it dropped off in Forest Meadows.
Well, I can fund this Met, you know. I mean, I got that hint, oh, and I can stack up my Met, I heard it.
You got that?
Oh, I catch it. Watch my mouth.
Ms. Smith, would you like to make a comment while we're hoping that Ms. Ranki can get on?
Sure, Jennifer Smith. I love when we have this meeting. I think there's great facts that's important for leadership of the county to know, and for members of the county to know, and for the industry. I'm excited to see that we've had so many of the rights to apply have been activated. I think it gives us a good bearing for where we're headed, and to stabilize the local industry, local legal industry is going to be great. It helps us communicate with one another in the industry, so we continue to bring best practices to our county. I think you all know I operate in two counties now because during the ban, I expanded, not by choice. I love Calaveras, this is home. But this ordinance and the way it's written is hands down one of the best in the county, and to see and be a participant in it, and the way it's operated through the DCC is phenomenal. And I think hats off to Greg, and hats off to their division for the updates that he gives to the community. It's important. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Ms. Ranki, you have permission to speak on our end?
As you see, we are open to the public. If at any time you do want to show up in person to possibly circumvent any technical difficulties, you're more than welcome.
Permission to speak is being allowed to this participant, so I'm not sure. It doesn't seem to be on our end.
Well, I, my intention is not to cut anybody off. Bring Ms. Edwards.
I was just going to say, this is just an informational item, and certainly Ms. Ranki can, since she appears to be having trouble calling in or using Zoom, she certainly can email the board.
Yeah, she just tested, and she's not sure.
The board's not taking any action on this.
Yeah, we're not taking any action. Please feel free to email the board in its entirety your comments, they will be read. And we do have the opportunity for you to participate in person if you would like to show up in person and avoid these technical difficulties. Anything else, any other further questions by the board? I'm bringing it back. Were there no further public comment?
Correct, there is no other further comment. How about comment?
If everyone's fine, we'll move on from this item to supervisor's announcements. Thank you, Mr. De Vassilia, we appreciate your time. Mr. Wayland, excellent. We appreciate all the good work you're doing. Supervisor's announcements, in compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. I will not be reporting anything out at this time. Mr. Guerra Mindy.
Yeah, I wanted to bring the board up to date just really quickly, I'm sorry. Thanks. Just really quickly, GS, RCRC, the GSFA, Golden State Finance Authority, which we're all a part of, is going to make a real push in the next, over the next 12 months on these federal and state dollars for broadband expansion. We're discussing forming a new entity called Golden State Connect, where we will actually help implement that final mile. The state's going to do the middle, we'll do the final mile. And so, things like, you know, the CNET cable that goes right to the middle of our county that has no off-ramps, we could actually plug into on our local ISP providers, kind of access to that, which we have not been able to do. It's really exciting. The state of California is being very encouraging to us, federal government as well. And so, it didn't look like the private sector was going to get this done in an equitable and quick way, and so, we, as part of their JPA, will be participating in that. I think it's really exciting. I'm going to serve on the steering committee for that. I'll keep you guys up to date on what's going on there. In addition, AMRA met last Friday. We are talking about scoping future projects. As you know, we've had great success, certainly up on the Highway 4 corridor, working with Forest Service, and we will be working with the organization to scope out where are we going to go next. We know there's going to have to be more work done on the Amador side of the river, and hopefully, we'll be bringing some of that work down below the 3,000-foot level as well, to impact other parts of the watershed than just the Forest Service lands. A lot of exciting stuff. I will keep you guys up to date as it evolves. If you have any questions, I'm happy to talk to you guys. Thank you, Mr. G.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra Mindy. Good, good stuff right there with the broadband.
Yeah.
Ms. Callaway?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Toffenelli?
You can do it.
You can do it.
You can do what? Rita and I had a Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting yesterday. Is that what you're talking about? And we had a LAFPA meeting on Monday, which Rita was chair. Is that, okay. So, we attended both those meetings.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli and Ms. Callaway. Ms. Fuldorff?
Yesterday, I attended a POC and RED meeting, which was hosted in D4 and Copper. Kudos to the commissioners on the POC and RED Commission. They are going to each district, so they will be coming to a district near you. So, it was really great to hear what the community had to say. That was really nice. Tomorrow, I will be a guest speaker on a webinar, a live webinar, talking about ableism and how it's preventing equal representation as an elected individual. So, it's the opposite of, out in the public, it's what is that like when you sit at the podium? And they're going to be myself, a city council member from Long Beach, and a candidate from New York City Council. And last but not least, I have been receiving phone calls about the Blue Cross from the public, a negotiation with Dignity, and the public is really concerned about what that means, and so, where that goes next with us, and how do we calm the public, and what are we getting from Dignity Health for constituents to feel better, especially since they're the primary service provider in this area? So, I've been getting a lot of that input from the public over the last couple days. And that's all I have to report on.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. I'm going to reel it back to myself. We had a few meetings with CS EDD this year.
What is that?
Central Sierra Economic Development District. You know, it entails Mariposa County, Topeka, Calaveras, Alpine, Amador, really good group of people. And we're delving into a lot of the federal funds and everything when it comes to broadband and planning and everything. So, Kathy Galino's been attending all those with me and working with the other counties and everything. So, when you're doing your rounds, Mr. Guerra Mindy, stay in touch with Ms. Galino because we got a lot of different funds coming in. Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn into closed session.
Thank you.